Please stand for the pleasure and allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Honorable City Council Members. Going to ask that make sure that your mics are turned on, please. And good evening to Mayor McCrayt, our City Treasurer in her absence, to our Deputy Clerk, to the Administrative Staff, to our City Attorney, Chief of Staff, and those who are viewing via our broadcast channel and YouTube Live. Welcome to the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. Today's date is Monday, February 28th, 2022. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so under the public comment portion of the agenda. Please fill out a request to speak public comment card located on the table in the back of the chambers and hand it to the Deputy Clerk. Additionally, members of the public who are viewing tonight's meeting via our broadcast channel or YouTube Live can submit their comments to publiccomment@romulusgov.com. And at this time, Mr. Chair, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo?
Here.
Councilman Barton?
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe?
Here.
Councilwoman Tally?
Here.
And we know that Councilman Wattsworth is-
Yeah, he called. He's excused.
Okay. So noted. Councilwoman Webb?
Here.
And Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum for tonight's-
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
-council meeting. And at this time, be the reading of our council meeting agenda. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Three, petitioner. Four, chairperson's report. Five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven, warrant. And number twelve, communication. And number thirteen, adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented. So move to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Number two minutes, two A, for approval are the minutes from the regular council meeting held on Monday, February 14th, 2022 at 7:30 PM.
So move for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held Monday, February 14th, 2022. Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the minutes from our regular meeting held Monday, February 14th, 2022 at 7:30. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Oh, I'm sorry. To the Chair, abstain.
Oh, okay. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Agenda item 2B, for approval are the minutes from the special meeting study session held on Monday, February 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM to discuss the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget for council. Motion would be in order.
I'll make that motion for the approval of the minutes from the special meeting held February 14th, 2022. Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, approval of the minutes from our special meeting study session on Monday, February 14th at 7:00 PM to discuss the 2022 and 2023 fiscal year budget for council. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Abstain.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you. There are no petitioners on the agenda this evening. Takes us to number four, the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Hope everybody had a nice weekend. You know, spring is right around the corner. Tonight, we didn't have any special meetings tonight. So at this time, I'm going to recognize Councilwoman Williams.
I would like to ask council to approve a memorial resolution for Betty Scott. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Webb, for a memorial resolution for Ms. Betty Scott. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved. At this time, I'm also, the Chair is going to recognize our library director, Ms. Brayden.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Audience. I'm here tonight to present the 2020-21 State of the Library presentation. My name is Patty Brayden. I'm the library director. I believe you should have this in your packet, and it's also on the screen. First of all, I'd like to start out by introducing our library leadership team. Jim Nappertowski is our Board President. Jennifer Johnson is our Board Vice President and also our Huron Township representative. Candy Lukowicz is our secretary, and Candy is with us tonight. Debbie Hoffman is our Treasurer, and Kathy Abdo is also here, is our council liaison. I want to thank them all for their great leadership on the library board. I'm going to give you an overview here of what I'm going to present tonight. First, I want to tell you about the grants that we have been awarded this year. There's three of them. We're very excited about that. We have several accomplishments, and I want to tell you about our resilience during the pandemic, our new services that we've added, and our future goals. The first grant that we received is called the Public Library Services Grant. It's in the amount of $1,880. We used this grant to purchase launchpads for checkout. These are devices that can be checked out for adults and for kids, and they're preloaded with different learning skills, how to start a new business, brain-building skills for adults for kids. We have STEM learning, literacy fundamentals. Those are just a few of the many launchpads that we have that anyone with a library card can check out. The second grant we received is called the Cares Grant. That was in the amount of $5,460. With that grant, we purchased five Kindles for checkout to patrons, five mobile internet hotspots for checkout, and two laptops for staff use. The third grant is the Improving Access to Information Grant in the amount of $21,280. This is the highest grant amount that we have ever received that I'm aware of. We are using that right now to extend the Wi-Fi for our patrons and anybody in the parking lot throughout the whole parking lot. We are in the process of ordering 10 Chromebooks for checkout to patrons. You can check them out, take them home, and then return them when they're due. And then 10 laptops for in-house checkout by patrons to use in the library and also for our staff to use to teach classes. Some of our accomplishments this year include we completed 80% of our strategic plan goals. We hired a full-time new services librarian who's doing a lot of new programming for us, including the fact that she created a teen advisory group so that we can ask our teens what they would like from their library. She started a tween book club, and we're also offering new STEM and homeschooling programs. We created a head of adult services and outreach position. We completed a comprehensive review and reorganization of our adult collections to provide better service for our adult patrons. We started automatic renewal of library materials last October, so you don't have to renew as long as no one else is waiting for that item. It renews automatically for you two times. And we upgraded our magazine area. One of the most significant accomplishments this year was completing the Historic Newspaper Digitizing Project. I've mentioned this in years past. We started this project 10 years ago now, pretty close to when I first started working here. We finally have completed digitizing over 40 years of local newspapers. Most of them are the Romulus Roman, but there are also some from Huron as well, the Little Paper, and also a few others from Huron. So if you're looking for information going back into the history of Romulus and Huron, just go to our website, click on Resources, and then Historic Newspapers, and you'll find those full text. You can do searching. They're very, very popular. So special thanks to our donors. Without them, we would not have been able to do this project. Diane Hazen, who's a former library director here for many years, the Romulus Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, and other library patrons. We thank you for helping us complete that project. During the pandemic, our staff showed tremendous resilience. They provided virtual programs for all ages with record-setting attendance. This is something we obviously had never done before, so we had to figure out how to do it, and our staff was very successful with that. We created a reopening plan in five phases. The first one was virtual services, as I mentioned. Then, just a couple months later, we were open for curbside service. Phase three was open to the public with limited access. That means patrons could come in and use the copy machines, but they couldn't browse the collections at that time. Phase four, we finally opened for browsing the collections, and that we called Grab and Go. And then finally, phase five, full service resumed with regular hours. We opened our study tables, and that was on June 22nd, 2021. New services that we've added this year include Mango Language Learning, which is a database you can log into with your library card, and you can pick from over 70 languages to learn online. This was actually recommended by a city employee who said, "I want to learn a language. Can the library help?" And so we looked into it, and we were able to offer this subscription service free of charge to our patrons with a library card. We also offer Grab and Go Activity Kits for youth, teens, and adults. These are kits that they can take home with them and do at home where they can learn things or do a craft, that sort of thing. We are also now offering online library card registration, so you apply for your card online, and then you stop in the library later and pick up your card. We are also offering Tech Time Computer Help on Saturdays for people who need help with using any type of device, really, if you get a new phone or just need help on the computer, whatever it is, we can help you with that. And then we started a youth TV series collection for checkout. This next one is pretty significant. It's a program that we joined called TALK, and it stands for Text and Learn for Kindergarten. This is a program you sign up for, for free, of course, and parents can receive text messages each month to prepare their kids for kindergarten. So it'll just give you a short little text about how, you know, when you're baking something, you know, teach your kids about measuring, or sing songs to your kids, or read to them, you know, so many minutes per day, that sort of thing. So it's very helpful to prepare kids for kindergarten. In partnership with the Romulus Rotary, we now have the Little Free Pantry, which is a box outside the library where people can bring or take non-perishable food items, and it's very heavily used. We have people going in and out of there every day, and it's always pretty much fully stocked. So people are very generous with giving. And then the Kindles, launchpads, and mobile hotspots I mentioned previously. We recently added, just in the last couple of months, homebound delivery of library materials. This is for patrons who can't get out of their house for whatever reason. They're injured, and they can't drive, or just don't have access to transportation. We're happy to provide a delivery service of library materials, and we will also pick them up for you. So you just need to sign up at the library, and we'll get you on board with that. We also now have a notary public on staff. He is there on Saturdays, so I know there are many notaries here at City Hall, but we have him there on the weekend when City Hall is closed, so that's a nice partnership that we have with City Hall, and also some evenings after City Hall is closed. We just recently, in the last couple of weeks, started a new program that we're calling VHS Conversion to DVD or Flash Drive. If you have home movies that you took many years ago, and they're on a VHS, or they're on a small little videotape, you can bring them to the library, and we will transfer them over to a DVD for you, and play them on your TV, or to a flash drive. And it's very minimal cost. We're just providing the DVDs and flash drives at a small cost for that. We're also offering a teen peer tutoring program, and we added a page to our website specifically showing programs for seniors. So if you're in that age group, you can just take a look at that website and know what we have to offer for you. Coming soon, so this year, I mentioned the expanded Wi-Fi. We're working on that right now. We have a new meeting room, an expanded meeting room, that will be available very, very soon in the next, hopefully, couple weeks, fingers crossed. Our public computer and service desk areas have both been renovated. We added new carpeting in that area, as well as into the adult services area, and additional storage space for our tables and chairs for the meeting room. Also coming soon, we're going to be adding a Family Craft Class Series four times a year, starting in March, and a senior cinema luncheon that'll be held periodically throughout the year, starting in April for seniors. Few other goals. We want to finish up the goals outlined in our strategic plan that we started four years ago that were put on hold due to the pandemic. These include our expanded outreach to teens and youth, as well as to seniors and other adults, and then upgrades and improvements in our adult services area. There's many ways that you can connect with us. We now have a QR code that you can scan, right there on your screen, to get to our website. You can subscribe to our newsletter. You can follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, or you can just give us a call or stop in the library anytime. So here is our wonderful staff. They worked very hard this past year, and they've done a fantastic job, and they and I want to thank you for supporting your library. And I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Any question from council? Any questions? Ms. Webb?
I just have a comment. I can't speak too long, and I could talk about you and your staff and what you have done for over an hour. I personally appreciate you and your staff, what you guys have put together, and especially to Jake, who wrote the grant. That is so important. You know, we've all pulled into parking lots, and we want to connect to the Wi-Fi, and if we don't have our mobile program, we can't do it. And people coming and going from the library, that is, that's a very, very important thing to have. And also, the storage. I took a tour. Appreciate you guys getting together to make the improvements. It's a small building, but your plan, what you have over there, you utilized every single space of that building. And then with all the new programs, I just take my hat off to all of you. We appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. I'm going to make this very short. Thank you so much and your staff for bringing Romulus Library from the 80s to the century of 2000. Thank you so much. Job well done.
Thank you so much.
Ms.-
Your support.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
So Patty, I was in there a couple of weeks ago, and I'm just looking at the vision unfold, and it's just remarkable. It looks so good. Even, it's still in the works, and it looks really, really good. So I just want to applaud your efforts and just piggyback on the comments app and say you have done a magnificent job, you and your team, and I just cannot wait to see the finished product, because it looks good already. And just thank you for the creative and innovativeness you guys do, you know, just doing something different all the time. I mean, we just can't keep up with you. Always doing something new, creative, and innovative, and that's what we need. So thank you so much and the team, everybody. Y'all, yeah, y'all, y'all too, Candace. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Any other comments? Ms. Brayden? Again, thank you for, great job you're doing with the library from day one. You hit the ground running, and we really appreciate that in Romulus. Again, thank you.
I just want to mention one last thing. This is not my library. It's your library. It's everybody's library, and we just want people to use it and, you know, benefit from all the resources and services we have.
Okay.
It's for you all.
Thank you, Ms. Brayden.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Williams had some other things to say about Ms. Scott?
Yes. I just wanted to say that Ms. Scott, Betty Scott, she had a heart of gold. She did so many things for the folks, not only just in her neighborhood, but in the city of Romulus. And I would be wrong if I didn't mention that. The family has been the type of stand-up family that we all need to practice in doing. I mean, there was not a need that they knew about that they didn't reach out to help. And so I wanted to make sure I mentioned that about Ms. Betty Scott. She will greatly be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize, the Chair is going to recognize, our City Clerk, Ms. Braggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to ask if council would adopt a memorial resolution for the family of, or in honor of Mary Evelyn Carr. And after council have taken action, Mary's family, they're here, and I'd like to read the resolution and present it to Mary's family at this time. So again, I'm asking if council would adopt that resolution, a memorial resolution in honor of, for memory of Mary Evelyn Carr.
I'll make that motion.
Who making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
You support it? It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Williams, for a memorial resolution. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
And at this time, I'd like to read that resolution-
Okay.
-for Mary's family. Whereas, the people of the City of Romulus were truly saddened to hear of the passing of Mary Evelyn Carr on February 24th, 2022. And whereas, Mary Carr was born in Speedwell, Tennessee on March 2nd, 1941, and was a resident of the City of Romulus since 1980. And whereas, Mary Carr was a devout member of the Romulus Wesleyan Church, dedicating her servant's heart. She found great joy in stimulating her mind with Sudoku puzzles and various arts and crafts projects. And whereas, Mary Carr's greatest delight was the love, wisdom, guidance, and warmth she unconditionally gave to her husband of 61 years, Kendall Carr, her three children, 13 grandchildren, and 17 great-grandchildren. Mary's light touched the lives of everyone she encountered, and the legacy she leaves behind is a testament to the life she lived. And whereas, Mary Carr's death leaves our city with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such an amazing citizen. Her presence is a space that cannot easily be filled or replaced. And therefore, be it resolved that the honorable elected officials of the City of Romulus express to the family of Mary Carr their heartfelt sympathy and deep realization of the loss they have sustained, and the hope that they will be consoled by the memories of her fine life and wonderful achievements. And be it further resolved that this memorial resolution shall be presented to the family of Mary Evelyn Carr. And this is signed by Mayor Robert McCrayt, City Treasurer Stacy Page, Mayor Pro Tem John Barton, Councilwoman Kathy Abdo, Councilwoman Celeste Roscoe, Councilwoman Tina Tally, Councilman William Wattsworth, Councilwoman Eva Webb, Councilwoman Virginia Williams, and yours truly, the City Clerk. And at this time, if the family wouldn't mind standing up as we present this resolution to you.
Also, I believe Mary's great-grandson, he wanted to know, I believe, who the mayor and the mayor pro-
Wants to know who the president is.
So, he wanted to introduce herself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing us to present this to the Carr family.
You're welcome, Ms. Braggs. At this time, the Chair is going to recognize Councilwoman Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Back last year, we engaged in a contest called Why I Love the City of Romulus, something that we wanted to do to promote positivity within our city. And I just want to thank Ms. Myla Ray for answering the call. Thank you so much. It was something that was new that we- And I just want to thank our administration, Mayor Julie White-Toco, the Chief of Staff, and everybody who plunged in and just, I brought the idea, and they just took it and ran with it. So thank you, Mayor, and yours team, Julie White-Toco. We have sponsorship for the basket that we're going to present tonight to Myla from Public Service Credit Union and from the Romulus Chamber of Commerce. So we just want to say congratulations, Myla. Thank you again for answering the call, and I just want to present you with a couple of things. Is that okay? I'm coming.
Have the library. Yes, we have books. Thank you so much. Thank you. I heard that these are somewhere, I have some things that you like. They also have gifts for you, $50 from $50. I'm going to give this to Mom. Do you have people in the picture? Can we put that right back, please? Yeah, can y'all come down, please?
Sure. Okay.
Really? I love this man. Yeah, yeah. On the dance. Okay. Is everybody ready? One, two, three, and yeah. out. We are engaging on another Why I Love the City of Romulus, starting March 1st. Is that tomorrow? I think we're going to start this contest again. What we want to do, we're trying to, we want it to coincide with the City of Romulus birthday, which is May 7th. So it's going to start March 1st, run through May 2nd, oh, no, run through April 30th, and we will announce the winner at the May 2nd council meeting. So let's get them entries in, we see what we can do when we engage. And so we should take Myla's example and get those letters in and talk about why we love our city and just keep the positivity going, positivity going. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tally.
Thank you.
At this time, that concludes the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, number five, the mayor's report.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and everybody at home watching, and also those in our audience. To start off my report today, I'd like to bring up and introduce you to Dr. Carrie Krantz. She's a third-party consultant that's working with our school systems right now to evaluate. And she'll tell you right here what she's, she'll be working on our community for next few weeks.
Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to say that I have been working with the school district for only two weeks. But I attended the Rotary and the Chamber meet and greet last week. And I spent a couple of hours with the loveliest people. And to see the warmth from a city council is really special. And I'm just complimenting you on what a nice city you have and what wonderful people I'm meeting. I had my first tour of the elementary, Bill and Barth Elementary today. All week, I will be spending half a day in each of our elementary schools. And I've been hired to do two things. I've been hired to listen to community members and to hold a series of events where people can say what their points of pride are, what their challenges they see, what their fears, but really to allow for a base of information to be shared, to set the stage for the next search for the next superintendent. And I am taking this job very seriously. I'm an educator by 30, I'm showing my age, but 30 years in education as a teacher, administrator, assistant superintendent. My strengths are instruction and building a culture of trust and high achievement and pride. And so I'm just delighted to be here. I wanted to share with you that the first community listening session is March 15th from 6:00 to 8:00. And I'm going to leave the sign-up sheet here. I'm hoping for at least 20 people for each event. And I'll be hosting for the next several months, events wherever I can have an audience to speak to and wherever I can get somebody to come to the event to share their insights and thoughts. That will shape the next direction and the next chapter. I can give you a little insight today, some meetings I attended, is that we're really looking at revitalizing that pool and having that be used all the time. And our early childhood education center and our early preschool programs is a place that we're going to be putting a lot of attention to and bringing back some trades programs. So those are the things that are on the docket for our work. And the interim superintendent is a person that brings many, many decades of experience for the short term. And I think the district is in good hands until the next decision is made. So I'm just here to help out and I'm very impressed. So I'll leave this sign-up sheet. And I will be, you just need to put your name on here and your email address and your phone number. I will be following up with details to follow. And even if you sign up and you're not able to attend, you'll be on my list to send you further information. So taking enough of your time, but it really is a great city. So thank you.
Through the chair? Yes, Ms. Tally.
Real quick, I'm sorry, you said that was the 15th, 6:00 to 8:00?
It's from 6:00 to 8:00. And I'm looking for a place to host that.
Okay.
It's possibly going to be at the Progressive Hall. Thanks to my friends that were at the Rotary and Chamber meeting last week. That's, they recommended that as a nice place to hold it. So it's a neutral, it is designed for people to be very honest. It is not a place where we're going to have a discussion per se. We're not going to debate, we're not going to argue. But everybody who is there will have an opportunity to answer posed questions. And everyone will be actively listening to one another. So I think, I've held them before and they've always been very productive. There, it's a safe environment, it's a trusting environment. And we establish rules and norms so that we all are on our best behavior.
I want to thank you for coming in person and giving us the invite. That's huge because our school, our city, our courts, our, all that businesses, churches, we're one community. So I want to thank you for doing that, to go on the path of unity for our city. And thank you for making that personal invitation. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm just, again, very happy to be here. Everybody was so welcoming who I met last week and you're just continuing that, that nice feeling. So that means a lot and it goes a long way. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave this and your wonderful clerk is going to take this off at the end of the night.
Thank you. A couple of events that happened in our city this weekend. One, we had the Chamber of Commerce put the first annual black-owned business owners event on Sunday. Great attendance, great people, great contacts. It was a great vibe, great to see all those people out. What an incredible event. Get some good contacts for DDA and some possible movement downtown. So hats off to the Chamber of Commerce and Jasmine Dancy for scheduling that event. Also, the Dog Days Annual Event. Deputy Chief Shelby and his team put together a great event over there again. Great service to our taxpayers and our residents who own dogs. So it was a great event. Into action items under my report, Relay for Life event. I would ask that council, I'll concur with the administration and authorize a no-fee permit for the Relay for Life activities, as well as the closure of Hunt Street between Goddard and Bibbins between 4:00 on Friday, September 23rd, 2022, and ending at 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, September 25th, 2022.
Through the chair? Yes, Ms. Tally.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize a no-fee permit for all Relay for Life activities, as well as the closure of Hunt Street between Goddard Road and Bibbins Street, beginning at 4:00 p.m. on Friday, September 23rd, 2022, and ending on 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, September 25th, 2022.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Williams, for Relay for Life event role closure request, any discussion? Hearing non-role call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Next item I have for action, the clinical site agreement contract with Schoolcraft Community College. I would ask that council, concur with the administration to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into an attached master educational affiliation agreement between Romulus Fire Department and Schoolcraft Community College, which will allow EMS students from Schoolcraft College to job shadow with the Romulus Fire Department as part of the state-required clinical contact hours for EMT program.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to accept a clinical site agreement contract with Schoolcraft Community College.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, for clinical site agreement contract with Schoolcraft Community College, any discussion? Hearing non-role call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. The next item I have is ITB 211202, 34th District Court, Employee Parking Lot Security Gate. I would ask that council concur with the administration and reject all bids received and award ITB 12, or 212202, Justice Fence Company for the purchase and installation of a security gate at 34th District Court in the amount of $29,998.
Through the chair? Yes, Ms. Tally.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and reject all bids received and award ITB 21/22-02 to Justice Fence Company for the purchase and installation of a security gate at the 34th District Court in the amount of $29,998.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for ITB 2122-02, 34th District Court, Employee's Parking Lot Security Gate, any discussion?
Uh, through the chair?
Uh, yes, Ms. Webb and then Ms. Williams.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Webb. Ms. Webb, go ahead.
No, I would just like to ask the question and I apologize to my colleagues. I, I wasn't able to, to study this. Where, where is this gate going to be placed? I know it's in here, but I, I didn't get a chance to review it.
That's fine. The gate's going to be on the south side of the parking lot for the employee gate on the south side of the building. It was in the original specs to build it. And we decided we'd wait for a minute to see if we were going to actually need it. And if we didn't, we'd save some money. But we still have old habits and you still have the public pulling in the back and they've tried to breach the back of the building. So we figured a security gate's going to be installed and help alleviate a lot of the unnecessary foot traffic back there.
Thank you.
You done? Okay, Ms. Williams?
I just have a question. On page 30, it states that the total cost is $29,998. The down payment was $13,480. The remaining balance due is $16,518. And this is only speaking of, the competed bid is only speaking of $16,000. So have that $5,000, have that $518 already been paid?
There was a down payment already made to Justice Fence. But like I said, we decided to wait and see if it's actually needed. We'd have got a refund from Justice, Justice Fence if it wasn't installed. Um, that was part of the bid spec originally went on of the building. But we decided to wait, see if it's actually needed. And, and later on, during operations, it was determined, yeah, we need to move forward with this gate. So that's why we already, they already had a down payment. But we still wanted to let bid because of the amount and because we pulled it out of the, the other bid for, outgunned that one.
Well, what I'm saying is it may be an error in the, the numbers, but it's saying the down payment was $13,480. The remaining balance is still $16,518. But the bid is only for 16. So I'm just saying, maybe the numbers were mixed up. Or maybe there's an error in the numbers. I just noticed that. We are approving $16,000, but it's saying the remaining balance due is $16,518.
No, the approvals for the $29,998. But because we were going to move forward earlier on this, they already had a deposit for Justice Fence. They already had a down payment on this one. If we would, if we decided not to move forward with that gate, they would have returned those funds.
But just look at the numbers and maybe they need to go back over the numbers. I'm just saying, it's, we're approving tonight $16,000, but it's still a $518 based on this, this document. On page 30.
Page 30. Well, we'll double-check to make sure all the figures are correct. Excuse me, but the bid amount is the $29,998 for the total job.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll double-check the math to make sure all the numbers are right before anything else is paid to Justice Fence.
Yeah, I was just looking, you know, would it be in the balance of $16,000? Maybe the $518 should have been included. Or if that was already paid, then it shouldn't have even been a part of the balance.
Okay. I will investigate it to make sure we're correct.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments, discussions, role call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Next item up for action is ITB 212210, a two-year UPM cold patch pricing. I would ask that council concur with the administration and award ITB 212210 to both bidding companies, Cadillac Asphalt for one year at a price of $120 per ton, and year two, to $125 per ton, and Ajax paving for one year at $115 per ton, and two-year, $120 per ton for a two-year term to expire on February 28th, 2024, with the option to extend the bid for not more than three additional one-year terms, the original bid upon a written mutual agreement for UPM cold patch for the DPW.
Through the chair, for me?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and award the bids to both companies, Ajax as well as Cadillac.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for the ITB 21/22-10, two-year UPM cold patching pricing, any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Again, just to the mayor, I noticed that the $11,500 and the $20,000 only comes up to 20, no, the $17,519 and the $9,000, you know, where it's coming out of the, where it's approved by the finance department, that's only $27,131. So it's a shortage of $4,368. So is that another error? I just want to make sure if I'm voting on something, I'm, because they're saying it's the total not to exceed over 31. But if you only have with both of those accounts, $27,131.
I'm sorry, what page are you looking at?
Page 40. Up under Finance Department Approval.
Is that from Adrian Local? Steve, you want to go ahead and answer? If it's not to exceed?
What are we asking for? It's a, it's a not to exceed, about they may not use it. They have used some already, I think.
Right, but what I'm saying, even though it said not to exceed past 31,5, right? But what we are approving is 27,131. I mean, that, that's what these numbers are adding up. So on a lot of times, it could be a typo. I'm just, you know, pointing that out.
And through the chair, for me?
Yes, so, Ms. Williams.
What the attorney just stated, apparently they didn't put, that is considered a contingency. We always, we usually have those in our contracts. So it may not have been put in. And they don't have to come back to us for a bid in case they need more cold patch. I'm thinking that. I don't know. We'll have to get with Roberto or Ms. Hood. But usually, we do have a contingency.
If I can, excuse me, Mayor McCrate and Mr. Chair, we do have Kathy Hood that's on the line. So if you do have questions, she, she's available to answer those questions for you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yep, she's, she should be ready to go. She's on the line. So if you do have questions.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, Kathy.
Okay, um, the funds that I signed for were what we budgeted for in the fiscal year. What Maria has on there, I believe, is what's available through her, her funds. It may not be the same, because we have used some of the funds in this fiscal year for cold patch. So, excuse me. That might be, and, and like you said, the contingency as well. I think there might be, just because we have bought cold patch in this fiscal year, you know, it takes a while for everything to catch up through the purchasing. When we go into BSNA to check what's actually available. I put the total amounts that we actually budgeted for in my, in my line items for what was available for DPW.
Ms. Roscoe, did you have a question?
Through the chair?
Yes.
What Kathy just said is kind of what I was, I was thinking. And that's what I was going to mention, that it looks like we've already used some of the funds. But that's how much is budgeted for the whole year. And, but that, the 17,51966 and the 9,61139 is what we have left for this budget year. That's the way I understood it too. So, just a comment. But the other, other comment, I had one other, other comment. By using both of these companies, then we can, if one isn't available, we can use the other. Is, is that why we do it this way for, for both of these asphalt companies?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Through the chair?
That's all I had.
And through the chair, because this is what we did before. I remember us doing this before.
Right.
Okay. Because this is consistent with what we've done before. Okay.
All right. All right. Okay. If no more discussion, roll call, vote. Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair, both yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Next item up, ITB twenty-one, twenty-two, thirteen, two-year pricing for tires and tire services. I would ask the council to concur with the administration and award ITB twenty-one, twenty-two, thirteen to the most responsible and responsible bidders, Jam Best One and Schrader Tire and Oil Incorporated. Jam Best One has guaranteed prices for one year period ended February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and Schrader Tire and Oil guaranteed pricing for a two-year period ending February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Through the chair?
Ms. Tally?
I'd like to concur with administration, award bid ITB twenty-one slash twenty-two dash thirteen to the two most responsible, responsive and responsible bidders, Jam Best One and Schrader Tire and Oil Inc. Jam Best One has guaranteed pricing for one year period ending February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and Schrader, Schrader Tire and Oil have guaranteed pricing for a two-year period ending February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Roscoe for ITB twenty-one slash twenty-two dash thirteen best for the two-year year pricing, tires and tire services. Undisputed, it's good to get guarantees these days for pricing. So that was a good thing. We got some guarantees here, especially two years. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair, both yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Uh, last item, um, is introduction of budget amendment twenty-one, twenty-two, ten, general fund. I would ask council to concur with the administration, introduce budget amendment twenty-one, twenty-two, ten to cover unforeseen costs for the Wayne County Drain Assessment due to increased cost for Drain Public Benefit Account.
Through the chair?
Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make that a motion to concur with administration, introduce budget amendment twenty-one slash twenty-two dash ten to cover unforeseen costs to the Wayne County Drain Assessment due to increased cost for the Drain's Public Benefit Account.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Roscoe for introduction of budget amendment twenty-one slash twenty-two dash ten for the general fund. Any discussion? Here is no discussion. Roll call, vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair, both yes, motion is approved.
Thank you. And before I conclude my report, I would just like to ask everybody who's watching, like keep the country, Ukraine, the thoughts and prayers, and, uh, hopefully things go well there and say a prayer for them. Thank you very much. That will conclude my report.
Thank you, uh, mayor.
Number six is the clerk's report. I have two action items. Six A, our treasurer Stacy Page is requesting a thirty-minute study session on Monday, March seventh, twenty twenty-two at six forty-five PM, and this is to discuss the quarterly investment report. The date and time are available for this request.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Ms. Roscoe?
To approve study session request for Monday, March seventh, twenty twenty-two at six forty-five to discuss the quarterly investment report. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the study session request for Monday, March the seventh at six forty-five to discuss the quarterly investment report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair, both yes, motion approved.
Last action item, six B, and this is a request to amend dates for the twenty twenty-two citywide spring fall yard sale. At the regular meeting held on Monday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty, council approved the dates for the twenty twenty-two citywide spring and fall yard sale. Unfortunately, the dates that were submitted for approval were in error and they were not consistent with the past practices. Uh, the clerk's office is requesting to change those dates, uh, for the twenty twenty-two citywide, uh, spring and fall yard sale, um, to Thursday, May nineteenth, Friday, May twentieth, Saturday, May twenty-first, and Sunday, May twenty-second, with the rain dates of Thursday, uh, May twenty-six through Sunday, May twenty-ninth. Also, we're asking you to approve a change in the dates for the, uh, fall yard sale to, um, September, Thursday, September twenty-second, Friday, September twenty-third, Saturday, September twenty-fourth, and Sunday, uh, September twenty-fifth, with rain dates of, uh, from Thursday, September twenty-ninth through Sunday, October the second. And we do apologize, um, for that error.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Ms. Roscoe?
To amend the dates of the twenty twenty-two citywide spring and fall yard sale, and that will be on our website, I would imagine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for that request to amend the dates for the twenty twenty-second citywide spring fall yard sale. As mentioned by our clerk, Braggs. Um, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Webb, she stepped out for a minute. Uh, chair, both yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. Um, before I close out my report, I have two announcements. Um, and, uh, so I'd like to announce the Community Shred Day. This is our second year that we're offering it to the community. Um, and so we've added even more. So it'll be a paper shredding and electronics shredding. Um, it, that date is for Saturday, May the fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two, from nine o'clock AM to twelve o'clock PM. Uh, it'll be right here at City Hall. Uh, we will have the flyer on our city website. Uh, we will make sure that this information, uh, council is, you know, we'll email it and have a flyer in your mailbox. So we're really excited. We got a really good response last year, and a lot of cities do offer, you know, a free shred day, uh, for the residents. So, um, still bring your old electronics and paper and shredding, and we'll have, there's a list of the types of electronics that can be shredded. And then lastly, um, you know, our city treasurer isn't here this evening, but our Wayne County Treasurer asked if I would, uh, make this announcement, and particularly to those residents who may be facing foreclosure for the personal property taxes. So, um, particularly for, um, taxes for two thousand nineteen or prior years, there's a deadline. So you must get into a payment plan no later than March fourteenth. And so they're willing to work with you, but you must call them, um, or you have to, uh, pay the back taxes in full by March thirty-first. So April first is too late. So again, if you're having some issues with back taxes, please contact, uh, the Wayne County Treasurer's office. Um, their phone number is three one three two two four five nine nine zero. Again, that number is three one three two two four five nine nine zero. Also, you can, um, visit, uh, their website at treasurer.waynecounty.com. Um, and you can send them an e, an email. Um, Wayne County Treasurer, Sabri, um, he's responsive. He really wants to encourage this program to help, uh, residents who, uh, who are having issues with back taxes. Um, he strongly recommends that you email, um, his office at taxinfo@waynecounty.com. Taxinfo@waynecounty.com. Also, um, they have a program if you have questions, because Wayne County is closed, so it's kind of hard to get in the office. But what he's, um, they have asked the treasurer, and these are Zoom meetings. Um, and so there are two, um, Zoom meetings, uh, that are set up now before that tax deadline of March fourteenth, and that's, um, uh, Wednesday, March second at six o'clock PM and Wednesday, March ninth at six o'clock. So please, um, reach out. Uh, I, Mr. Sabri had announced that they didn't have any, uh, tax foreclosures in the, um, the last two years for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. So, um, he's very passionate about this and, uh, want to help the residents in Wayne County. And so we'll have this information available. Um, get it on the website. It was just, I kind of took some notes, uh, from Mr. Sabri.
Through the chair?
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
So he said he had no foreclosure. Is that, is a result of this program?
I, I believe so. They, they, there's a lot of grant money out there, and so there's a lot of incentives to help. Um, he mentioned that on, through the weekend, uh, they had, uh, council members that were literally going out. They had a list knocking on residents' doors in Detroit saying, hey, you're delinquent, contact us. Um, the important thing is that resident, there's help there. Um, and, uh, you, the resident just has to take the initiative, initiative to contact the treasurer, Wayne County Treasurer's office.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Um, and that concludes the clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, okay. And as I mentioned earlier, our city treasurer's not here this evening, which that will take us to number eight, public comment. And this is a portion of the agenda for those of you that are in the audience and, uh, would like to address the city council. The rules to address city council can be found on the back of the meeting agenda. If you would like to address city council, please raise your hand, and after being acknowledged by the chairperson, approach the podium. And if you would like, please state your name. Please note that members of the public who submitted a public comment card will be called upon first. You will have three minutes to speak, and any additional time will be upon the consent of the chairperson. And as a reminder, members of the public viewing tonight's meeting, meeting via the city's broadcast channel or YouTube Live can submit their public comments to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment period. And Mr. Chair and council, we do have one written request, and we have some members from the St. John's Lodge, number forty-four.
Counsel, mayor, and clerk. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Melvin L. Moore. This is, uh, Dorice Gray of St. John's Lodge, forty-four, under the leadership of Curtis Thomas and most worshipful Prince Hall Grandmaster, Rodrick L. Anderson. When I'm here for, we, we are doing a youth day fundraiser at, at Romulus Lane, thirty-seven four five two West Huron River Drive, Romulus, Michigan, four eight one seven four. And go ahead.
It's for our youth day fund. Uh, it's, it's to raise funds for our youth day. You know, every year we have our back-to-school programs and, uh, we give away our book bags and have our picnic down at the lodge. So this year, we talked about raising money and then we're doing a bowling tournament. So what we're gonna have is a nine-pin no-tap over at, uh, Romulus, uh, Romulus Lane's. The cost is twenty dollars per person, which I do have tickets for you all.
And ten dollars for the kids.
Ten dollars for the kids, yeah.
Dorice, speaking to microphones, real loud. Thanks.
And, uh, we will, uh, we will be there from five to eight, or five to ten, whatever, whatever, until we get finished. We're gonna have some raffles there and, you know, all kinds of, uh, a couple baskets that the Eastern Stars are donating. So it's, it's our fundraiser for our, you know, back-to-school project. So basically, we're just asking and letting you guys know what we're doing, where we're doing it, and need your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorice, uh, see me after the meeting. I donate for you. I think I got a dollar.
The date would be Sunday, March the thirteenth, twenty twenty-second. March the thirteenth on November seventeenth, from five until.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
No one, no more cards submitted from the audience, but we do have a written, um, a submission, uh, via email.
Okay.
During public comment. So I will read that. Um, this is coming from Ashley Williams. It reads as follows. Greetings, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Ashley. I am a student at Central Michigan University, majoring in community development with a concentration in community service. I am also a resident of the Oakbrook subdivision. I am in the process of completing a research project-based paper into the importance of neighborhood parks, specifically the process of revitalizing parks. In my almost ten years of living in my neighborhood, I rarely see neighborhood children who do not own dogs utilizing the park. This include my three children. In my research, there are many benefits to residents having access to safe and functional parks. I have reviewed the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I just have a few additional questions. I know there was low response from the twenty twenty survey. Does the Parks and Recreation Department plan on reissuing the survey? What is the cost difference between the dog park and general, and general side? Does the survey play a role in which parks receive consideration for development or redevelopment? Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only, uh, request.
Any more comments from the audience? No more comments? We'll close that part out, Madam Clerk.
Number nine is unfinished business.
Um, Ms. Abdo?
Earlier today, we had our library presentation, and there is one thing that, um, our librarian wanted me to announce. The library was closed due to the carpeting, but we opened it a day earlier than expected, and it's in full operations. So she wanted me to make sure that everyone out there, the listening audience, knows the library is open for business. Okay?
Thank you.
And back to the letter we just got from, can we have our new Parks and Recreation Director answer those questions?
Absolutely. Well, we're gonna look into that survey as well. Uh, we're gonna be doing a visioning process too, and, uh, in early this year.
And she will take care of that.
We'll revisit them again, and also we are looking at reinvesting in the dog park because we have found that dog park is used, um, to the extreme. So.
It is?
A lot of people are using that dog park.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I will make sure that email is forwarded to the appropriate department heads and, uh, also to our office, Mayor.
Thank you.
If there's no more unfinished business, takes us to number ten, new business. Number eleven for approval is warrant twenty-two dash four.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We pay warrant twenty-two dash four in the following amounts. General fund, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifteen cents. Major street fund, five thou, five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and eleven cents. Local street fund, six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Public safety fund, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Cable TV, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Community Employee Activity Fund, twenty-one dollars and nine cents. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Nine eleven service fund, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. NARC forfeiture state, one thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and one cent. Library fund, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and thirteen cents. DDA, three thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Tifa District Two, ninety thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-eight cents. Court Building Construction Fund, seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Water and Sewer Fund, three hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Motor vehicle, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Technology- thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Technology Services, nine thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Retiree insurance benefits, one hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Revolving fund, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Current tax, twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy cents. Payroll fund, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and forty-five cents. Total of all funds, one million, three hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
Support.
It's been motioned by, uh, Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number twenty-two dash four for one million, three hundred and sixty thousand and sixty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Any discussion?
I have a question to the mayor. On page seventy-one, under, or to Hillman, it's four different numbers, um, where it has a dollar amount of what they're charging, but it doesn't say what they're charging for. So it starts with zero, zero, nine, four, seven, seven, eight. Maybe that need to be filled in so it can state what we're actually paying for. You see it? It's the.
Which one are we talking about?
Third one down on page seventy-one.
Right, seventy-one. What number is associated?
Zero, 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 nine, four, seven, seven, eight. You see where that's blank, and then you go down to zero, zero, nine, four, five, two, two. It has the dollar amount that they're charging, but it doesn't state what they're charging for. So if they can just have that filled in.
So your request is for more data on that?
Well, just to have it filled in so it can state what that six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars is for. Each, each item, if they can, the.
Okay.
Finance director can just fill that in for future, you know, so we'll know.
There's more than one there, too.
I said it goes down. There's four of them altogether.
There's four of them altogether. So there's no.
Yeah, I, I see the ones you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, so it was on the original warrant bracket? Okay. Did you, did you copy that? I know Julie doesn't have a microphone. It is in a warrant, it is in a warrant basket. So it just, you copy over on this copy today?
No, just, just so, you know, it'll be in the record, so it's not blank, but it's a dollar amount there. Thank you.
No more discussion. Roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Number twelve is communication. Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback after, after our mayor about the, um, about the black-owned business and vendor showcase. It was a very good first-time event, um, for our city. Um, shout out to Jasmine Dancy, who did a magnificent job in, uh, the vision of it and the execution of it. Um, so I want to give her a great shout out. And then just for the chamber, the support of the chamber, um, in executing this event. It was really well-attended, um, and it was just a really, really good event. Um, so, um, just some of the chamber members there. I just want to note, note some of the key notables that were at this event. Um, Margie McAnally, Mark Lukowitz, uh, Greg, I don't have Greg's last name, but he's a new member on the chamber. Um, our mayor and his wife, they were shopping. Uh, thank you for your support. Um, our clerk and, uh, DeJean, they were shopping. Thank you for your support. Um, we also had Councilwoman Williams was in attendance. Judge Martin, Lisa Martin, was in attendance. We had some of our boards and commissioners on, in attendance. Stan Bragg was in attendance. Emery Long was in attendance. Um, um, also, we had some, um, folks that, um, came in support of us, some, um, electives. Uh, Sheri Gay Deignago was there. Darren Camilleri, Tanisha Stanley were also in attendance. Um, our school board president, Debbie Piles, was in attendance. Um, we had, um, the sponsor of the event, Gina Wilson Stewart of the Telegram News, um, who sponsored the whole event. Um, and then we had, um, who else did we have? We had some, just, oh, we want to shout out to Mr. Rozak, who is the owner of the, um, city event, um, center, and Bonda Cooley, who was actually, does the managing of the day-to-day business of the center. It was just a great event. The presentation of the, um, of the facility was just magnificent. Um, just a really good event, and a lot of people where we were there, we kept calling it an expo. We want to grow it to an expo. Um, it was really, really nice, very well-attended. Um, and the most notable of everybody who came there, of the people I've listed, was our residents. I want to thank our residents for coming out and supporting this great first-time event. Uh, we have Romulus residents, we have Insta residents, we have Belleville here, uh, 'cause I asked, I'm like, where you hear about this from? So, um, I want to thank everybody for the circulation of telling everybody they told somebody and they came. Um, and again, for the Telegram News for their part in advertising it also. Very well-attended event, and everybody, if I missed you, I'm sorry. Um, but yeah, very well-attended. I just want to shout out Jasmine again for the hard work she did in putting this on. It was a very, very good event. Thank you. And the chamber, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
And I would like to say pertaining to that event, this young lady was there, and she made homemade turtles. And I don't know what's in those turtles, but if I wake up at night, I only have two left. I wake up at night, they call me. And it's like I'm sleeping. I'm sleepwalking to go get a turtle. No, it's not good for me, but they are delicious. So I hope she definitely come back. I told her she needs to come back, because they were a winner. Homemade turtles. I've never tasted them. So good, and they were big. They were worth it. So, uh, I definitely enjoyed, uh, that event. And also, uh, tomorrow, we will be at the high school with Forgotten Harvest. As you know, all you need is your, uh, name, how many in the family, and your address, and we'll load you up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Oh, excuse me, John.
Communication? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say this, because I know Mr. Barton probably thought I forgot, but you asked me to make sure I give you some ass.
Oh, okay.
And so here you go. And any other council members that were like, the N-ninety-five and they're in black, I can't do the white ones, because I get them too, too quick. So anyone that, else that want them, Mr. Barton did request them, and I just didn't want him to think I forgot them.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Ms. Williams. Wow, okay. Really appreciate it. Okay. Any other , uh, commun, communication?
Just want to, Mr. Chair, just want to, uh, wish, uh, Councilwoman Roscoe a happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So happy birthday.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
And if there's no more communication, takes us to number thirteen, adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Williams, for adjournment. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.